It's asking me to go back for more, and I will.
It's fantastic. It's a wonderful event. Something that I look forward to every year. Good food, good people.
Those good people throwing the party, City Council President Herb Wesson and his staff. He says it's a token of his appreciation for all that city workers do.
Many of them are working, you know, extremely hard to make up for lack of staff. They rarely complain. Somehow, some way, they always get the job done.
City workers were all invited, but the majority came from City Hall and Wesson's own District 10.
And this is our area. We maintain all the signs, traffic markings, and streets, keep it safe.
The food is awesome. The chicken is great. The tacos are fabulous. And I'm just so thankful that he does this for us.
On this day, whether it was Department of Transportation crews, or cops, or just old-time friends, at this party, everyone came together as one big city family. I'm Anna Margos for L.A. This Week.
And all that delicious food you saw came from restaurants in Councilmember Wesson's own District 10. While July marked the silver anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, Gil Reyes shows us some very special citizens who displayed their talents at a celebration downtown.
Why are there so many songs about rainbows? And what's on the other side?
People marched near City Hall to celebrate the 25th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. People like seven-year-old Nathan.
I was born blind, but that doesn't mean I do not see. I just see differently. With my fingers, my ears, my nose, and most importantly, with my heart.
The Americans with Disabilities Act is intended to protect disabled people from discrimination.
We're still not there. And we're still fighting. And businesses are still not accessible.
L.A. officials say that needs to change globally.
There is a lot of international consideration to have a treaty that nations should all sign onto. The United States has not signed onto it yet. But in that spirit, the City of Los Angeles tries to do everything we can to go above and beyond the requirements of the ADA. So making sure our employees have accessible workstations. We try to make sure all of our citizens, again, have access literally to our buildings.
In hopes of one day, equality for all.
Someday we'll find it, the rainbow connection, the lovers, the dreamers, they meet.
Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Thank you.
The Americans with Disabilities Act was signed in 1990 by then-President George H.W. Bush. A multimillion-dollar luxury development in downtown L.A. begins to take shape. A Spanish-language channel store takes flight at LAX and improvements at a Sunland area park. All these stories in City Beat. This construction site will soon be transformed into a high-end luxury development. L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti attended a groundbreaking ceremony of the $500-million mixed-use complex at 1200 South Figueroa. The 1.6-million-square-foot project will include retail space and 648 luxury rental units across from L.A. Live and Staples Center. During the ceremony, more than a dozen homeless advocates held a protest, calling attention to the lack of affordable housing in the city and increased enforcement of laws removing homeless encampments in downtown L.A. The complex, set to be completed by late 2017, is being developed on a 2.7-acre lot close to a metro rail station. It will include two 35-story residential towers with 48,000 square feet of retail space and 1,770 parking spaces. With a development also set to feature 15,000 square feet of digital signage, the project is being built by developers as something that will rival New York City's Times Square. The construction project is set to create approximately 1,000 jobs locally and serve as a step closer toward Mayor Garcetti's goal of building 100,000 housing units by 2021. Mayor Garcetti was also on hand at a ribbon-cutting at LAX, celebrating the opening of Univision's two retail stores inside Terminal 2. The specialty stores, which are the first Univision stores to be opened nationwide, offer a variety of items and merchandise, and large HD video screens feature programming from the Spanish-language networks.
What we see now when passengers come to Terminal 2 while they're waiting for their flights is they can spend great time and come to what will be the first store to bear the name of Univision, which we are so proud of.
Oro Vista Park, which spans 8.2 acres in the Tahanga-Sunland community, recently received a series of improvements that officials say increases accessibility while retaining its natural beauty. Improvements to the site include new trails that link to existing hiking and riding trails, a staging area with parking for cars and horse trailers, landscaping with native plants, a demonstration garden with smart irrigation system, and informational signage, picnic tables, and a shade structure. This project was a collaborative effort made possible by the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Office of Councilmember Felipe Fuentes, the City of Los Angeles Bureau of Engineering, and the community members of the Tahanga-Sunland area. The L.A. Bureau of Sanitation was out in full force, keeping our city streets and sidewalks looking better than ever. That's the focus of This Week in Tweets. The Bureau of Sanitation's Alex Halu posted several before-and-after photos of the cleanup effort. He tweeted, "Wow. #CleanStreetsInitiative crews picked up over 21 tons of illegally dumped construction waste in CD 7." He also posted photos of debris on a city sidewalk in CD 1 and how clean it looked after crews cleaned it all up. He tweeted, "Clean Streets Initiative picked up two tons of this CD 1 corner. We had to take pics from all angles." Another photo showed furniture, mattresses, and other items littering the sidewalk. The tweet read, "Clean Streets picked up over five tons of bulky items off the streets." And another street corner in CD 2 was transformed. Halu posted, "Great job in picking up two tons of waste off this CD 2 street corner." And that's a look at This Week in Tweets. A performer who gets kids excited about music, enjoying the sights on two wheels, and looking back at a pivotal time in U.S. race relations. All this and this week's things to do. Enjoy a musical performance for the whole family. Roots rocker Randy Kaplan, described by New York Magazine as "one of those 'happy-they-exist' people", delivers his trademark fast-talking, singing rap, and bluegrass calypso tunes, Tin Pan Alley classics, Broadway numbers, and more. Since 2006, Kaplan has released five "not just-for-kids" albums. And according to Timeout New York Kids, Kaplan doesn't dumb it down for the kids. He just expects them to come along for the ride, and they do. His work, included in numerous top-10 lists, has been honored by the National Parenting Publication Awards and the Nickelodeon Parents' Pick Awards. You can check him out on Saturday, August 8, at 12:00 and 2:00 p.m. at the Skrball Center, located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. And jump on your bike for Ciclavia, which opens roads to bicyclists, pedestrians, and other non-car traffic. The next event will be held in Culver City and Venice on Sunday, August 9. The Six Mile Route encourages people to bike or walk between Culver City and the beaches of Venice by way of Palms, Mar Vista, and other beachside neighborhoods. Officials said participants will be able to explore diverse neighborhoods, discover new businesses, and even take a dip in the Pacific. The festival takes place from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For details, visit ciclavia.org. On the 50th anniversary of the 1965 Watts Rebellion, the Hammer Museum looks back at the past and present of race relations in the United States with community organizers, authors, and historians. This ongoing series, titled "The Watts Rebellion: 50 Years Later", of timely, thought-provoking events addresses current social and political issues. The program takes place on Sunday, August 9, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Hammer Museum, located at 10899 Wilshire Boulevard. Tickets are required and available at the box office one hour before the program. For more, visit hammer.ucla.edu. And that's a look at some things to do. And finally, this week, it's the Center for Culture and Education in Los Angeles. And now, Plaza de la Raza is about to make it even easier for folks to visit and enjoy all it has to offer. This dirt lot at Plaza de la Raza will soon be transformed into a landscaped parking lot with 30 new parking spaces that are also environmentally friendly.
We're also very concerned, as you are, about the environment. And here, we're going to put in what we call permeable pavers where we park, so the water actually will be infiltrated and will protect the lake here from the parking lot runoff.
City officials and community members recently gathered at Lincoln Park to break ground on the new lot, which will feature sustainable drought-tolerant plants, lighting, new smart irrigation, and a seating area facing the lake. Councilmember Gil Sadio said the groundbreaking reflects his longtime commitment to the plaza.
I have a little button someplace in my house. It has a little pyramid, and it has, you know, the whole thing. And we used to sell these buttons so that we could raise money for Plaza.
Officials say that the new parking area at Plaza de la Raza, which recently celebrated its 45th-year anniversary of presenting art and culture to the community, will also be used for other activities.
When you're doing something at a public space like Plaza de la Raza, it's not just a parking lot. It's another opportunity to do something creative.
A parking lot with the potential of becoming another outlet for even more artistic expression. And that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning. Shhh. Good morning. It's Tuesday, August 4. I'd like to welcome all of you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, 10:00 a.m., at 10:00 a.m., and the public is welcome. Madam Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blooming Philbonne, Buscano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Carrasco, Coria, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Rue, Wesson, 12 members, Price, Rue, Wesson, 12 members present a quorum, Mr. President.
I was getting ready to say, "What?" Anyway, with that, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Rue moves, and Mr. Harris Dawson seconds. Next?
Municipal resolutions for approval.
Mr. Harris Dawson moves, and Mr. Rue seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, let's rise. I'm going to ask Mr. Rue to lead us in today's flag salute.
Please stand. Put your hat on over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Let's proceed. Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there's been a request to continue Items 1, O, T, and X to August 18.
Without objection.
Items 1 through 3 are items noted for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that Items 1, E, F, S, U, and W may be received and filed as much as the liens have been paid.
Okay, without objection. That'll be the order.
And there are cards on Items 1 and 3.
So let's hold 1 and 3, and let's move forward with Item 2. Let's open the roll. Are we ready? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate.
13 ayes.
Okay, let's continue.
Items 4 through 13 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, so I know we want to hold... Is it 12?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Englander?
7 and 8. We're waiting for the committee reports from this morning.
So we'll hold those?
Until the reports are circulated.
Yes. 7 and 8? 7 and 8? Any other items? I don't see any. Let us prepare to vote on those remaining items. If you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's continue. Where are we, Madam Clerk?
Items 14 through 24 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Specials, Mr. Buscano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 22, we have an amendment to 22.
22, we will hold for Mr. Buscano. Members, any others? Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on items 14, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 23.
We'll hold those items, and we'll prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings council to items called special.
Thank you. Mr. Bonner, you want to do yours and do 10 and 10? Or you want to wait a bit?
Uh, we could wait just a minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll do item 3. Uh, Mr. Herman, we have you on item 3.
Mr. Speaker, can you remove the illegal barrier up here so I can...
No, if you quit disrupting the meeting, the officer will allow you to come forward.
Mr. Speaker, it's one thing to be ignorant, it's another thing not to just take effective communication to remove the illegal road barrier that you have there.
No, you're not on the subject.
I'm talking about a bid in this district for California streets and highways. For the California Constitution. Public announcements of the tabulation of ballots that were passed on, or are going to be passed, on August 5th. This has something to do with ELF, Little Englander Liberation Front. I would like to know, because it says CD-12 here. Isn't the representative of that area ELF? Englander Liberation Front?
Stay on the subject.
Mr. Englander is the subject of this...
No, it's not. Stay on the subject, Mr. Herman.
It says CD-12, Mr. Speaker. So I'm going to hold my time to win minute to your ignorance. Keep the last two seconds.
Thank you, your time has expired. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
If you are not going to speak on the subject, then you will be asked to return to your, to your seat. Okay, what is the next item that we're going to take up?
Item 14, call special for cards.
Okay, we'll do item 14. We don't see it. In fact, let's... We'll do item 1. Mr. Walsh. Ms. Donna Pierman.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This concerns initiating street vacation. That doesn't mean having fun on the street during the summer. What this is, and, uh, is easements. In other words, a big developer comes in and pays off the city council, but the big developer doesn't have all the property the big developer needs. They need easements. They need a little piece of property here, a little piece of property there. So what the city does is vacate the street. Uh, if the city owns it, they give it away to the developer. If the city doesn't own, own the property that the developer needs, what they do is, uh, is eminent domain.
Uh, Mr. Walsh, if I could get you to hold for a second. We were gonna go on item 1, but you spoke on item 14. So why don't we just vote on item 14? So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, you can now come forward, and this will be on item 1.
Item 1, HollywoodHighlands.org. Again, when you do a good job, I'm the first to congratulate you. And you do a really good job, almost always, on these, uh, these building and safety reports, uh, these liens. You have been tough on the liens, you see. Uh, you're not as tough on liens west of La Brea, because that's where the special people live. But you are good on the people who own property in places like Alameda, The Valley, West Remington, Garba, West Judge Street. And what these are is fines for noncompliance and code violations. We have enormous numbers of code violations. And although you, uh, you could do better, you are doing, at least scaring some of the property owners on code violations.
Okay, Ms. Pierman, followed by Shaw on Sunland Boulevard. Shaw, I can't get the first name. Annie David Alanis. Uh, Ms. Pierman, the floor is yours.
Oh, yeah. Okay, it's too bad John Walsh doesn't worry about code violations so much done by the large corporations and the big business. And now, then he does about the small, little homeowner.
Stay on the subject.
That problem is liens for the small homeowners. These are not right of mind. In fact, these are people who are trying to make it, and you don't try to work it out with them. If they do, that's whatever, these silly code violations, probably something that's really, uh, like, they let their weeds grow big, or their fence is not correct, or the things that are really kind of small and silly. And you want to, then, they're not just paying for the fine themselves, they're paying for the fact that they're late, and so, in fact, and then they add another fine on to that. And then it gets to the point where it's ridiculous, they can't pay for that. So then, what we do is then we put another fine on top of that, making it equally farther, harder for to get. And if they don't happen to come down here, yeah, some of them are forgiven, I mean, cut down or delayed, a lot of them are delayed, it's a question of, uh, well, probably, it's probably still going up, I'm not sure. Hopefully, you don't make them go up while we are delaying, and I imagine you're at least that nice to not do that. So, uh, this is not working out. We're not getting the revenue, then they're just going to lose their homes eventually. There's too many of them, even with the ones that are put aside, all the way from A to X, though probably five or six of them are probably already been paid. So, uh, this is not right. We don't need to have these people, uh, having to pay so much. Let's take it out of the hides of the, uh, this, uh, large business, uh, when they have code violations. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shaw, please come forward, identify yourself.
Uh, I'm Jyoti Shaw.
Speaking to the mic?
I, I, I am Jyoti Shaw, and I, I am here, um, because, uh, in, uh, 2012 February, I, I received this citation from LA City that, stating that there is rubbish and trash on my premises, 8221 Sunland Boulevard. At that time, I felt LA City made mistake, since I was not my, it was not my address. And also, I knew there was no construction going on, and there was no rubbish on the premises. I, but I respect LA City. I did not ignore the letter, um, or this matter, and I tried to resolve this matter. I called all these people, write letter to them. I, I talked to, uh, resolve this citation. But, uh, uh, your honor, I, I am here in spite of severe illness, that showed that, you know, my sincerity, that I tried everything in 2012, and they said the case is closed. And then, now, in 2015, I got the hearing later. So, and, um, I, I don't know what to do with this. I have all the papers that I, I, I sent to, uh, the, if you want to see all the papers.
Just give those to the sergeant. No applause, Mr. Herman. Okay, so this is what we're going to do, Ms. Shaw. We want you to just stay here for a few minutes. We're going to review your concern and have someone talk to you. So if you just maybe go over to the aisle over here, uh, could you raise your hand? See the young lady raising her hand? Why don't you go over there and have a conversation with her?
Okay, thank you. And this is my trustee.
Just go over to my right. Yes, sir?
Yes, my name is David Alanis. Um, I have paid a fine, and I went to a hearing on Wheelchair for, with Building and Safety, and I received this, uh, hearing notice to appear here, so I really don't know why.
What address, Mr. Alanis?
6229 Roy Street, or East Roy Street, Los Angeles, California, 90042.
I see that. So continue.
So, I have paid, and for, uh, for paying for this, now I was backed up, and now I'm going into foreclosure. So I am trying to re-modify, but if you guys are, or this, their city is fining me again, for I don't know why, because I already took care of it. Your inspector came by and signed off on it, and I haven't received anything since, except for this notice that I had a, had a sign for. Registered mail. So I don't understand why I'm being fined again.
Okay, if you could raise your hand, I, could you go and chat with, with her for a second? Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman, if you want to speak on this item, please come forward.
Now, are we talking about liens? How many times have I criticized you regarding the due process of liens? It's purposeful that you have no fundamental idea of the trauma you bring these people in here for testimony regarding their due process right without regards to a letter of certification. People like John Walsh and many others here are against the illegal liens. We oppose, and we demand that you revoke all of them, especially Mr. Fuentes, who has about seven of them on these pages. These children here deserve a future, and that's a home. They don't want to hear the bad business of local government taking advantage of raping your families of their homes, with no dignity to inspire us that we are Americans and deserve a right without the process. Stop the illegal liens. One minute.
Okay, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to just put this on the shelf for a moment, and we'll close the public hearing on this, but I'll get back to it in a few minutes. Uh, let's vote. It's my understanding, Mr. Rue, you'd like a vote on reconsideration on item 6? So let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, what we're going to do is, uh, Mr. City Attorney. Okay, Mr. Rue, as a courtesy to you, I will allow these people to speak. They'll get one minute each, starting with Doug Haynes and George Abraham, Robert Silverstein or Stern.
Good morning. My name is Doug Haynes. Real brief, I want to address a few issues that I don't believe the city council is aware regarding this site and the proposed development. First off, I've distributed for your review a photo of what actually used to be on this site, which is the landmark, um, building that Mo Richardson occupied for a number of years. The applicant in this case, which is CIM Group, went in, purchased the site at a reduced cost because of its industrial zoning, then immediately went in and demolished this landmark, and is now before you on a residential mixed-use project that would encroach upon the protected industrial area that we in the motion pictures industry desperately need in order to provide jobs for our future in this community. So I'd ask that you please review this project again, reconsider it, delay voting on this, and think about the implications of what's before you, and vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If the next person, please come forward and identify yourself.
Uh, Georgia Abraham, so a member of the Central Hollywood Neighborhood Council Planning and Land Use Management Committee. This project is in our area. Uh, conversion of manufacturing to commercial residential violates the core principle of the general plan of protecting the Hollywood movie industry. Only 1.8% of the land is preserved, and to lose any of it is significant. And allowing this will spur a domino effect for other developers. Loss of manufacturing base is bad for Hollywood economy and the environment. Uh, density that would result from this, uh, project is wrong for Hollywood because of the transportation impacts. Hollywood streets service two freeways that are never built. Santa Monica Mountains block, uh, travel on one side, and the resulting congestion will hinder travel in the entire metropolitan area. It's been shown that workforce is less competitive when the travel time increases, and it gives , uh, Los Angeles an economic disadvantage to all the cities.
Thank you, sir. Please come forward and identify yourself.
Thank you. My name is Robert Silverstein, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the 904 La Brea project, which amazingly seeks a general plan amendment and a zone change, uh, for a 169 residential unit, 40,000 square foot commercial project, all based on a low-level mitigated negative declaration under CEQA, when the law requires that an IIR be prepared. Let the record reflect that prior to the hearing this morning, I did provide to your city clerk, uh, and I have available for you as an additional copy, and I would ask the Sergeant-at-Arms to take it, um, some written objections which outline our concerns. These concerns relate not only to environmental issues, and we have demonstrated that this project has a fair argument of significant impacts in the areas of traffic, cumulative traffic, noise, and land use, but also the entire process for the general plan amendment that is being sought is a violation of the city charter. We ask you to take this evidence into consideration and deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
And there was one other person who did turn in a slip.
No, I'm calling them on. Thank you.
And let's...
I'm looking for Mr. Campbell, then Mr. Campbell, and is there a, uh, a wine grand, a wine? And, uh, I think it's... And I think it's Michael Gonzalez. I'm not sure. Please, go forward. Go on, sir. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, sir. I'd request that all the members of the council pay attention because I took the time and effort to come down here. This project is, could set a precedent for the area changing the zoning yet again from commercial light manufacturing. We need jobs in the area. We don't need more residential units on an already clogged, congested La Brea Avenue. And the fact that there would not be an opportunity for public input on this is a concession to the developer who has already shown that they don't deserve much consideration or special treatment. They tore down that Art Deco building in the middle of the night. The same builder who tore down the spaghetti factory. So why this developer should receive any sort of special consideration is beyond me. I represent Save Residential Hollywood. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's a Ruehe wagon, or?
Michael Gonzalez.
Okay, then I got, no, I'm still looking for this one other person. Anyway, you go ahead.
Thank you, honorable councilmembers. Michael Gonzalez, representing the applicant. Just a handful of points. This project has been the subject of three public hearings that were duly noticed. This is the first we're hearing from many of these opponents. Two, our MND is an adequate document under CEQA because all project impacts can be mitigated to less than significant. The building that was on the site was demolished pursuant to a validly issued demolition permit prior to any project commencing, and therefore is adequate and appropriate under CEQA. The La Brea corridor is actually in transition. If you look at La Brea, its recent changes along the corridor, proposing the project that we're proposing along a future transit corridor with a nearby existing transit corridor at Santa Monica actually helps preserve the innards or the internal part of the industrial core district, which is the essential low-rise, lower-generation streets that are appropriate for this type of use. Number three, our project is consistent with the industrial land use policy because it contains a job-producing component and provides affordable housing. We urge you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I know members in the, or, Mr. Rue, did you want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Council President, for allowing me to pull this item back. And I want to really thank the community members for coming out today. I do have concerns about this project. However, I am relieved that some of, that this project does have some extra parking, as well as units set aside for very low-income families, which is in line with the mayor's initiative to increase the affordable housing stock. Additionally, it is supported by the L.A. Conservancy, as well as supported by the Hollywood, by the HNC, which is a broad-based coalition of Hollywood residents, businesses, educational institutions, and nonprofits. But the biggest, but the biggest thing is that the current owners receive support and the, support from my predecessor. And I feel that this project is too far gone ahead, and lots of money has already been invested, that it would be unfair to come in at the tail end to stop the project. So while I, will continue working with the community for future projects, for this project, I ask my colleagues to support. Thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Let's move forward to item 16. I thought I saw you earlier. Mr. Murphy, Sean Murphy, are you here? Please come forward on item 16.
And, Mr. President, as he is coming, there is request to continue item 1P to August 18th.
So without objection, that'd be the order.
Yes, good morning. Item 16, I'm for.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Bonin, we're gonna take up, if you're ready, sir.
Yes, sir.
Item 12.
Yes, Mr. President. This item here deals with a proposal with the Archer School in Brentwood. It's an item of enormous controversy in my district. I believe I've reached a compromise that actually helps the community. Public hearing has been satisfied in committee, but given the level of concern in the community and the number of folks who've come here and testified today, I'd like your indulgence and ask if we could have a brief public hearing with testimony from both sides.
Does that work for you? Okay, let us begin with the comments from the public. Let's start with, is there Douglas Carstens? Please come forward. Eric Edmonds? And I can't quite make out. Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
I just wanted to remind the councilmembers that this is a fair hearing matter requiring heightened intentioned by the councilmembers to the speaker at the podium or to the councilmembers' monitors at their desks.
And maybe it's a Deborah and the something Meyer? And I'll have you identify yourself. So let's start. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I understand one minute? Well, I appreciate it. My name is Douglas Carstens. I am here on behalf of the appellant, David and Sofia Wright, and the Sunset Coalition, which includes over 30 members of the Residential Neighbors of Archer and several other homeowners associations. We've submitted a letter. It's dated August 3, 2015. We emailed it, we federal expressed it. I only brought one copy. I'm sorry, I didn't know it would be called special, and really appreciate the courtesy of listening to us and hearing us out. Appreciate the willingness to do that. The bulk of the letter is over hundreds of signatures of people who are of the same mind, that they are still opposed to this very over-large project. They would still like to see recirculation. They'd like to see the construction schedule updated. They'd like to see the new Oui-Ha guidance for air toxics applied to this project. We ask you not to approve at this time, but to continue it to obtain the proper information, disclosures, the right analysis, and then deal with it with the appropriate information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, if you would please come and identify yourself.
Good morning, Mr. President. My name is Eric Edmonds. I am president of Brentwood Hills Homeowners Association, a community of 450 homes in Mandeville Canyon in West Los Angeles. We are opposed to this proposal and to the Archer expansion. The statement that there has been a compromise reached is incorrect. There's been a compromise between one of 11 homeowners associations in Brentwood and two out of several dozen homeowners that abut the Archer School project. The argument that this project is going to make traffic better on Sunset when it's done is preposterous. And for the three years of construction that we are facing, traffic on Sunset is going to become a nightmare, sandwiched in between construction vehicles, cement trucks, dump trucks exiting the property. Sunset Boulevard, which is already gridlocked, is going to completely become broken. We urge you to disapprove this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And if you could come forward, identify yourself. But hold one minute. I think I'm looking now for Dr. Robert Hackney. If you're here, please come forward. And a Michael Leslie. And Eric Previn. So go right ahead.
I'm Deborah Hockemeyer, representing Brentwood Hills Homeowners Association. It is misleading to think that a compromise has been reached with Brentwood. 10 of the 11 homeowners associations in Brentwood do not support this expansion. We support keeping Archer to its promise when it entered the community 15 years ago to stay within its current CUP. If there are groundbreaking transportation management practices that would alleviate traffic on Sunset, let's put them into practice right now, today. Let's not wait three years until after we have 133,000 construction vehicles on Sunset Boulevard, which keep emergency medical services from getting to residents and keep fire trucks from fighting fires in the hills. Please delay this vote until traffic studies and toxin studies can be updated to consider the compression of the construction schedule from six months to, or from six years to three years. Thank you.
Thank you. Doctor, please come forward and identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Dr. Robert Hackney. I am a resident adjacent to this proposed construction project. The demolition and construction is on the verge of producing a monumental cancer cluster of unprecedented proportions. There is nothing in the absent high-level Gantt chart to reflect any effort to mitigate an inevitable production of toxicity in the air and soil-borne. The soil-borne component of this will probably have a half-life of anywhere between 10, 15, and 20 years, thereby essentially becoming a toxic waste dump, hence a cancer cluster of monumental proportions affecting sensitive groups in the community. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Leslie.
Thank you very much. I'm here on behalf of the appellant, Brentwood Hills Homeowners Association. We appreciate the opportunity to speak. Archer is now committed to completing the entire construction in three years without a major reduction in scope. And according to a meeting we had last week with Archer, they're overlapping the phases and accelerating virtually the entire project with the accepted mitigations into three years, which greatly exacerbates all the environmental impacts, including traffic. For example, in our meeting, Archer told us that there would be 98,000 cubic yards of earth at the pace of 50 double-trailer dump trucks in and 50 dump trucks out per day for six days a week for 12 weeks, and this is only some of the construction vehicles. What will be the traffic, air quality, noise, and other environmental impacts of the compressed schedule? We don't know, and more importantly, you don't know because it hasn't been analyzed under CEQA. We respectfully request that the city council sustain our appeal and recirculate the EIR. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Previn.
Good morning, Council President Weston. It is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2. And good morning, Mr. Bonin. This is a very similar project for the Archer School to do, and a massive expansion in their area, similar to what Harvard Westlake in our area is doing. So I'm a little familiar with it. The play, as currently seems to be the case, there's an enormous amount of money that has been spent lobbying the city of Los Angeles to push through something that obviously, if one neighborhood group among 11 or a dozen is opposed, there's obviously something wrong here. Now, do we have a situation where a group that is, has a 990, which is what, this is a public charity, so they don't pay city tax, or like the rest of us, but they are not supposed to lobby? Now, if they're lobbying as much as they are, aren't they supposed to check a certain box on their 990? Has Mr. O'Connell or the city attorney looked at that? Because I must tell you, sir, this really blanches the typical resident's mustache when we realize how many of the residents of the West Side there have suffered for so long through that traffic nightmare up until now to continue this thing and to push it through over the object? I mean, how much more objection could you have? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move on. No, no, no applause. We will move on to Raymond Klein, Elizabeth English, Barbara Bruzer. Yes, this is the supportive. Please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Raymond Klein, 908 Kenfield Avenue, Los Angeles. I'm president of the Brentwood Homeowners Association, which is the voluntary homeowner association representing 3,200 homes and covers the geographic area with boundaries that include Archer School and the residential neighborhood most impacted by the project and the congested area of Sunset Boulevard from Canyon View to 405. On June 30, we signed an agreement for a term of 20 years with Archer School that is over 27 pages, including exhibits restricting hours of operation, the number size and hours of special events, and guest vehicle caps between 3:00 and 7:00 p.m. Monday to Friday. We are very grateful for the assistance of councilmember Mike Bonin and his team, including Teresa Keen, for making this happen. Less than an hour later, Plum approved the project with 22 pages of 36 conditional use conditions and another 16 pages of 87 environmental conditions. Based thereon, VHA withdrew its appeal at the Plum hearing.
Thank you.
And now supports the project.
Thank you. So, please come forward. This should be Ms. English, correct?
Correct. Good morning. I'm Elizabeth English, head of the Archer School for Girls. I'd like to thank city staff for their hard work on Archer Forward and councilmember Bonin for his leadership and support. When the Westlake School for Girls merged with the Harvard School for Boys, it left West Los Angeles without a nonreligious girls' school. It was then that our founders set out to establish a contemporary girls' school with a mission to educate and empower the next generation of female leaders in this city. Fundamental to their original approach was and continues to be a deep and abiding commitment to diversity and inclusivity. We are proud to report that our students come from 91 different ZIP codes across L.A., and we reflect the face of greater Los Angeles, with nearly 40% students of color. We actively seek students from a wide range of ethnic, racial, and socioeconomic backgrounds, and Archer will award $3.4 million in financial aid to a quarter of our families that come here.
Thank you so much. Thank you. So if I could have, I think it's Ms. Bruzer? Followed by Deanna Meehan? Followed by a Ms. Rojas? Followed by Yvonne Hale? So identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Bruzer, and I chair the Board of Trustees of the Archer School for Girls. I'd like to thank the city planning staff for their hard work on this project and the Planning Commission and the Plan and Land Use Committee of the city council for their unanimous approval of the Archer Forward plan. Over the last four years, Archer has spent hundreds of hours engaging with neighbors in an open and transparent process. We have responded to every one of councilman Bonin's directives to modify the Archer Forward plan to ensure that it's right for our community. And through his exceptional efforts, we have gained the support of two leading neighbor groups, the Residential Neighbors of Archer and the Brentwood Homeowners Association. We thank the councilman for his leadership and commitment to this process. Under Archer Forward, Archer will bus over 75% of our students to the campus, and the rest will carpool. This is a model plan that embraces new standards for transportation management throughout Los Angeles. Archer Forward will provide us with the facilities we need to advance our mission to prepare the city's next generation of female leaders.
Thank you.
We thank the council for their support. Thank you.
And thank you. And if I have not called, let's hold the time. This is a 10-minute on each side. So once I get to 10 minutes on this side, it does not appear that I'm gonna get to everyone. So I just want you to know that in advance. So if we could have the next speaker, please identify yourself.
I'm Diana Meehan. 20 years ago, I founded the Archer School for Girls with Megan Callaway and Vicky Shore. I stand here on behalf of women leaders of Los Angeles, a group of leaders from the entertainment industry, business, civic affairs, and nonprofits who believe that Archer Forward is essential to preserving our critical mission. These women include Eileen Adams, Gina Davis, Kathleen Kennedy, Arianna Huffington, Julia Louis-Dreyfus, Roberta Weintraub, Barbara Streisand, Dr. Cheryl Saban, and many others. It is in our best interest to ensure that girls in this city It is in our best interest to ensure that girls in this city receive a first-rate education to prepare them for the difficulties and challenges of tomorrow. I would also like to thank Councilman Mike Bonin for his leadership and support throughout these four years. This project will provide critical facilities to support girls from across Los Angeles in the decades to come. I respectfully request your final approval for this important project.
Thank you. So I'm looking for Ms. Rojas, I believe, followed by Malcolm Mumford.
Good morning. My name is Erendira Rojas, and I have two daughters. One is graduated from Archer and the other one assisted the school. Thank you. La comunidad diversa es una de las razones por las que venimos a Archer. Las escuelas privadas que mis hijas asistieron antes de Archer.
We're going to get an interpreter for you.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Hold her tight.
Okay. 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 Mi nombre es Erendira Rojas, y tengo dos hijas. Una es graduada de Archer's, y una asiste aún a la escuela.
My name is Erendira Rojas, and I have two daughters. One is graduated from Archer, and the other one is going to another school.
La comunidad diversa es una de las razones por las que venimos a Archer. Las escuelas privadas que mis hijas asistieron antes de Archer fueron muy idénticas. Y con una familia hispana, sé que quería que mis hijas estuvieran alrededor de más personas que compartan sus experiencias. Ellas encontraron esto en Archer.
The community, the diverse community, is one of the reasons why I wanted my daughters to go to Archer. The schools, these private schools that my daughters have been going to before Archer were kind of identicals. And as a Hispanic family, I believe this is exactly what I want for my daughters to attend. And this is the reason why I sent them there, and this is the reason why this is what they found at Archer.
Mis hijas han estado expuestas a la diversidad de todas formas, de origen étnico, del procedente político, y círculos de amigas que reflejan también. Por no hablar los idiomas, las chicas de las escuelas que hablan.
My daughter has been exposed to the diversity in all kinds of forms, from the ethnic origin to the political background to the kind of friends that they have. And because of the fact that they don't speak the language, it also reflects. Thank you. Mr. President, you want her to continue?
I want to give her another 20 seconds.
Okay. Okay. Mi familia ha tenido una experiencia fenomenal en Archer, y no puedo esperar que otras familias experimenten lo que tengo. Los animo a ayudar a esta escuela a que continúe proporcionando la experiencia única que les da a sus estudiantes y que apoyen a Archer Forward.
My family has had a wonderful experience at Archer, and I just cannot wait until other families have the opportunity to experiment the same thing that we have experimented. Please, you know, we want our families to have the same experience, and we want them to take advantage of this experience at Archer.
Thank you.
No, thank you. So is it Mr. Mumford? Is there Malcolm Mumford? And Malcolm will be followed by Yvonne Hale, followed by Laverne Seals or Seales. Yes, sir.
My name is Malcolm Mumford, and I have two daughters who compete for Archer's swim teams. Throughout this process, many people have said that Archer has not made any real concessions, but I don't think that's true. Because one of the major concessions Archer made to the Brentwood community was eliminating the Aquatic Center. Because Archer doesn't have a pool on its campus, our girls spend an hour each day commuting to and from practice. So when there are competitors who have pools on their campus, they're able to be in the pool for two hours a day. That puts our girls at a tremendous disadvantage because they don't have an aquatic center. This was a major concession. But I'm here to ask you to give final approval to the other facilities that Archer is asking for so that our girls can get a 21st century education. The school has earned the support and respect of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think it's Ms. Hale. Yvonne Hale. Cindy, I wanted to call -- is Yvonne Hale?
She's here, and she'll yield to me, or I can wait.
Well, there's no yielding. So come on, Ms. Hale. And Cindy, I have your card. I just don't think I'm going to get to it. Go right ahead, Ms. Hale.
My name is Yvonne Hale, and in furtherance of time, I'd like to waive my testimony.
You need to go in and speak. We don't waive.
Sure. My name is Yvonne Hale, and I'm a neighbor of Archer and here today in support of the Archer Forward plan. As a member of this community, I have been impressed by the school's outreach and many efforts to involve neighbors in this four-year process. The school has also reached an agreement with two neighbor groups, the Residential Neighbors of Archer and the Brentwood Homeowners Association. And in regards to traffic on Sunset, it's awful. We can all agree to that. However, Archer is actually willing to ensure that they won't contribute to the problem modeled in their transportation management program. Both the Planning Commission and Planning and Land Use Management Committee have unanimously approved this project, and Councilman Bonin has voiced his support as well. I urge you to do the same and give your final approval today. Thank you.
Thank you. So, next speaker, please come and identify yourself. Start her time.
Yeah, good morning. My name is Dr. Laverne Seals, and I support the Archer plan. Thank you for listening.
Next, is it Ms. Finkelstein, Lauren?
Hi, my name is Lauren Finkelstein. I'm an alumna of Archer and a Board of Trustee member, and I support the Archer Forward plan. Thank you.
Okay, this will be the last speaker. And I think it's Danny Lennon.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Danny Lennon. I'm the athletic director at Archer. Nearly half of our student body participates in athletics, and of those, half play more than one sport. Participating in athletics at Archer isn't just about winning games. Firmly believe that life lessons and skills, lifetime memories are forged through athletic competition. What we have at Archer are spirited learners and fierce competitors, but what we don't have are adequate athletic facilities. Plan before you reflects our core facility needs. That'll allow Archer girls the same facilities that nearly every other school has. Hope you'll give the opportunity by approving the plan today, which has already gained unanimous support from the City Planning Commission and the Planning and Land Use Committee. Many of our neighbors now agree that Archer Forward is good for our school and for the whole community. Thank you.
Okay, again, that concludes the speakers on this subject. At this point, I'm deferring to you, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for reopening the public hearing. This is not even close to being the biggest project in my district since I've taken office, but it is certainly one of the most controversial. And it's because of location, location, location. The Archer School for Girls, a wonderful institution, I don't think anybody argues that, sits at Sunset in Barrington, one of the worst traffic choke points on the West Side. It can literally take an hour to go a mile to get to the 405 during peak traffic times. And that's why I said that the way I evaluated this project wouldn't be about the quality of the school, or wouldn't be about grudges against the school in the neighborhood. It would be about traffic. That was going to be the prism through which I would look at this project. Last year, I sent out a letter listing 30 conditions that this project needed just to merit my consideration. Most of them dealt with traffic. When this item was before the Citywide Planning Commission, I sent an additional letter asking for more specific mitigations for traffic. The CPC adhered to almost all of those, and at the Plum Committee, we added more in. This project has been going on for four years, two under my predecessor, and then two on my watch. As a result of the way I looked at this, and as a result of negotiations with the Brentwood homeowners and the nearby neighbors, the residential neighbors of Archer, and because of the willingness of the school, and because of the input of so many others with ideas and feedback, this project meets the litmus test I put down about traffic. I said I would not approve a project that made traffic worse. And this project, when these mitigations are in place, will actually reduce traffic on Sunset. Now, a lot of folks say, "That's not logical. That's not possible." It's simple mathematics. Here's how. There is going to be on this project a trip cap, limiting the number of cars that can come to the school annually. 76% of the students at this school will come by bus or van. The rest of them will come by carpool. Those carpools will have to have a minimum of three students per trip. Special events on this campus? You can't come unless you have a ticket, and you can't get a ticket unless you have one of the reserved parking spots. So folks can't keep on coming and keep on coming. It significantly reduces those who can come and go for a special event. Teachers are limited on their time of arrival. Some of them have to show up before 7:00 a.m. so that they're not contributing to peak-hour traffic. The traffic mitigations in place here, it's not even fair to say they're traffic mitigations, they're traffic reductions, are groundbreaking. They're absolutely groundbreaking. And they're actually, unlike many of the things the city does in the planning process, enforceable. And they're enforceable because the Residential Neighbors of Archer and the Brentwood Homeowners Association signed a binding covenant. This school cannot seek any expansion for 20 more years, and construction is limited to three years. That was negotiated in at the request of many of the neighbors, repeatedly, who asked for a shortened and tightened construction schedule. The covenant makes this more enforceable than even the city's conditions. I assure you that the Brentwood Homeowners Association will not let more than a flutter of deviation of these conditions go by without looking towards legal action to make sure they're fully enforceable. One of the worst problems we have with traffic in Los Angeles on the Sunset Corridor is that there are so many institutions there that drive huge numbers of cars to campus every single day. Archer has had of those institutions the best traffic mitigation plan for years. This makes it a superlative traffic mitigation plan. This is a new standard. And my desire, and I say this particularly to those who are members of the Sunset Coalition who are concerned about Sunset traffic, is to make sure that these standards are the ones that we hold all of the other institutions on the corridor to. Some of those we will do through requirements when they come and seek any discretionary approvals from the city. Some of those we will do through bully pulpit, and some of those I want to work with the Sunset Coalition on to generate community pressure in order to come up with the same standards. We need on this corridor a race to the top, a race to the toughest traffic reduction measures possible. And if we can do, for the other schools and the other institutions on this corridor, what this agreement does to the Archer School, we will see a genuine and significant and appreciable reduction in traffic. That's what everybody has been concerned about. That's what I focused on, and a reduction in traffic is what we're going to deliver. Colleagues, I'm going to ask for your vote on this. I would ask first that we first move to adopt the technical amending motion, 12A, that has been circulated, just enshrines a few of the conditions from the Plum Committee meeting. And after that, adopt item number 12 as amended. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bonin. With that said, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll.
And Mr. President--
On the amending motion, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That's approved. Now we'll have, this is a two-vote. So now we'll actually vote on the item as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
23. Daniel, Daniel Gus, please come forward on item 23. And Mr. Walsh on item 23. Please come forward.
Good morning. I'm going to quote a famous poet named Henry Marine, that the word of the day is bitch, which means bring intelligence to City Hall. If $50,000 didn't work as a reward the first time around, why are you reinstating it now? It's because people are afraid they're going to get killed when they turn in these, the people who are wanted. You're spending $80,000 today on a street fair for District 8 and District 10, but you're only offering these people $50,000 to upend their family's lives, their lives, to relocate, and run the great risk of being murdered, them, their family, their children. And it doesn't make any sense to give the same reward that didn't work the first time around. John Walsh is right. Snitches get stitches. Don't turn in people and ruin your life over $50,000, people. The city doesn't have your back. One minute only. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Walsh, followed by Antonio Ramirez, and followed by Donna Pierman. Yes, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You're copycatting the FBI with the top 10 most-wanted gang members. The LA Times won't even mention the names of the gangs. You know, as someone who taught for a quarter of a century in South LA, I taught many of the gang members when they were six, seven, eight, nine, and 10 years old. They even have a, I have a gang nickname. They called me the professor. And so I know what's going on here, and believe me, this city council doesn't want to have any kind of confrontation with the gang members. Because we started screaming and yelling about one death every day. The LAPD starts this top 10 most-wanted gang members. Don't worry, the gangs have decided that the pressure is too great. They have rescinded the order of killing one person at random every single day for 100 days. This is a $50,000 payment, again. Go in city council, go up to Hollywood Boulevard, snitches get stitches. If somebody snitches on the gangs, and there's a straight razor in the picture dripping blood, they will have their throats wet. You know it. I know it. The gangs know it. Anybody who lives south of Wilshire knows it. No one is going to mention a name of anybody who shoots down anybody else in cold blood. Where are you from? Incidentally, you notice I'm not wearing any blue or red. I don't, I'm afraid of the gangs, too. This is nonsense, the most-wanted gang members. Don't worry, the gangs are the most powerful they are in any city in America, and this city council looks the other way. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez, followed by Ms. Pierman, followed by Mr. Herman.
It is true. You start snitching or exposing these gangbangers and wetbacks, you will be like me, homeless, taxpayer, living on the streets, not because you're mentally insane, not because you are a drug addict, not because you have no home or no family. It's because you spoke out and exposed them all, and your life is now on the streets. So I oppose the wasteful spending. We, the taxpayers, are rewarding these ugly cochino panzones y puercos y toda su mierda. As a homeless taxpayer, I have a few questions. Where is the money coming from? What happened to all the high-technology surveillance that is so often touted and funded by homeless security and the bloody FBI that we voted on in the Public Safety Committee meetings? How long have I been coming here and pumping about these wicked, diabolical, nosy, uncivilized, filthy, scummy, racist, hate-mongering wetbacks and Latino chango gangbangers? But all Charlie Beck and his politicos did was mock, ridicule, and trash me by calling me crazy. So who is crazy, Charlie Beck, me or you? Who is, who is hiding behind the tarnished badge? You and the council members should have taken immediate legal actions against these cochino puercos, botijonas, chango gangbangers, and the wetbacks. Arrest them all and deport these pigs. Bottom line, you never enforced the rule of law. And the two, you hired a lot of chango gangbangers in uniform, and it finally cost the lives of a few good LAPD officers. And now it's costing the lives of a lot of good people out there who are homeless, the segment of population that is out there homeless, like me. And I shouldn't be ashamed. We are homeless, not because we are crazy, not because we're drug addicts, not because we're wetbacks, and not because we're gangbangers, but because we stood for something. And when I go to my grave, I like to say, "I stood for something," right or wrong. And it took balls to go out there and sleep on the streets every frickin' single night. I dare any of you to challenge, I challenge you to do it, or any of you. I challenge to go out there and take on these goddamn gangs, because I do that every night.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Pierman, followed by Mr. Herman.
I completely agree with her. I'll even dare you to go out one night like she has to go. Anyway, gang members don't have to have their guns locked in a container or disabled with trigger locks, like number seven, which I didn't get to speak on. So that shows you how bad those laws are. Let's see. Okay. Anyway, yeah. We weren't able to protect ourselves against these 10 most-wanted gang members, who, by the way, nobody's going to tell anything about them because they don't want to get themselves killed. If these people are already wanted for murder, what makes you think one more murder won't make a difference? We have to be able to protect ourselves. The murder of, oh, yeah, the murder of that law, these murders are the reason why we have to be able to not lock up our guns and be able to be able to protect ourselves and not have to disable it and not have to hide it away. If the gang members and the gangbangers can have their guns to kill people, to murder people, then I don't see why regular, law-abiding citizens can't have their guns. And trust me, people will not have, bring these people in because they'll get murdered, their family members will get murdered. their family members will get murdered, the ones that they love will get murdered. You're not going to ever get an additional award for these people. It's impossible. Thank you.
With all due respects regarding the mafia, the cynical, organized approval of this council, organized crime, white-collar crime, for their attribution to snitches get stitches, nothing without attitude. NWA. NWA. Nothing without attitude. But yet you went into Compton criticizing Dr. Dre and other Snoop Dogg-affiliated, talented men who decided to make something better out of their community.
Get on the subject, Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman, on the subject.
Should not be diminished when being offered rewards for the top 10 most wanted. When the rights of one man are threatened, they come to the lyrics. Nigga's right. Nigga's right. Nigga's right.
You're not on the subject. Stay, no, this, this has nothing to do with rap music. Your time is over. Thank you. This has nothing to do with music. No, you're disrupting the meetings. Sergeants, why don't you show him the door?
Gangster. Throw me out, no gangster.
No, you're throwing yourself out. He's still, he's still disrupting the meeting. He's still disrupting the meeting, wouldn't speak to the subject. So now you're going to have to listen from outside. So let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the door. Open the roll. I was thinking about you when I said, open the door. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer, it's my understanding you have an intro, which I forgot. I apologize, because we might have been able to save. Anyway.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The floor is yours.
And yes, we have some very special guests with us today. There are some high-performing students who are joining us in these chambers, and they are part of an amazing program called Helping Young People Excel Los Angeles, or Hype for Short. Why don't you guys stand up so you could be acknowledged and recognized? Now, these students are here today as part of the Hype class of 2015. These incoming seventh graders have carefully been identified as some of the most talented students in their schools, and they have been selected to be part of Hype. Let's, as Hype scholars, these students will be prepared both academically and socially over the next two years to gain full ride scholarships to some of the best independent high schools in the city. After they are admitted to these schools, Hype continues to support them all throughout high school to make sure they succeed and go on to college. They come from schools such as Marco Middle School in Council District 15, Burt Corona Charter School, and Valor Academy from Council District 6, Camino Nuevo Charter School and Monsignor Oscar Romero Charter School in Council District 1, Johnny Cochran Middle School from the 10th District, Vista Middle School from the 11th District, and last but certainly not least, Hollenbeck Middle School from the Great 14th District. So ladies and gentlemen, these students are some of the highest performing students, but also have taken upon themselves to do better for themselves and be supported by Hype to go on and do great things when they move on. Welcome to council chambers, and we look forward to hearing great things from you. Congratulations, students.
Thank you, and welcome. Let's move to item 17. If I could have Mr. Sean Murphy, Mr. Eric Previn, and Mr. John Walsh.
Item 17, I'm against.
Thank you. If I can get Mr. Previn, or are you still in the, Mr. Walsh, you can come forward. Mr. Previn, I'm looking for Mr. Eric Previn.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is the regular meeting schedule for the council's standing or crouching committees effective upon adoption. You have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 standing or crouching committees. Now, check this out, because they do most of their work undercover, although the state Brown Act is enforced, but the problem is, it's not on TV. We should have these meetings all on cable. But in fact, they're not on cable, but you can listen to these meetings, arts, parks, budget, economic, energy, entertainment. You can listen to these meetings on council phone. Please do so.
Mr. Previn? I don't see Mr. Previn. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Marquise Harris-Dawson? Oh, we've been, I've been waiting on this introduction.
Yes.
So for a very special introduction from the councilman of the 8th District.
Thank you so much, President Wesson. Very happy to welcome to Los Angeles City Hall, guest of Council District 8 and the City of Los Angeles. I want them to stand up, Mr. Youngman Kim and Mr. Heim, Ms. Heimjohn Kim. They're from Orange County visiting with us today.
Stand up. Stand up. Welcome.
They are, they are leaders in the financial industry and in the faith community, but most importantly to me, they are the parents of the most fierce community organizer I know, the director of Capital Projects on my staff, Ms. Joanne Kim. And so we're very happy to welcome them here today.
Give Joanne a round of applause. She is tenacious. She lives in my district.
Yeah.
Anyway, to your parents, you should be very proud. She's very good. She's going to do well here, and we all welcome you to the great Los Angeles City Hall. Let's give them one more round of applause. 17, let's go forthwith, and now we'll pick up item 19. Ms. Ramirez, Antonio Ramirez, item 19.
And while she's coming, Mr. President, there is a request to send items 1H and N, I'm sorry, to continue those items to August 18th.
Thank you.
Without objection, that'd be the order.
Thank you. I have a question. I just wanted to know if Gillespie House is located at 5863 West Tuxedo Terrace. A historic cultural monument is related to my wonderful daredevil pilot's extraordinaire, Gillespie, in San Diego. So I'm just wondering if there's a connection there with the name of Gillespie Airfield out in San Diego and the Gillespie Historic Cultural Monument? Because I mean, those two make a wonderful package. The pilots, you know, the ones that fly over the city hall night and day, they do believe that this is a tower. Oh, City Attorney is getting pissed off. Oh, Jesus Christ. Anyway, I just wanted to say thank you, City Attorney, but I just wanted to know-
She's nowhere close to the item.
Well, that was, that was very important.
Get back to the item, Ms. Ramirez.
The important point is, is this historic cultural monument really of great value? How do you, how do you grade what is historic, what is cultural? How do you bring those two components? And how do you decide what is, what is the importance of that monument? I wish you would give us all a guideline as to how you decide the factors of the historical value, the cultural value, and of this monument. How do you guide it? How do you decide upon the criteria of these two elements that make this monument important? Yeah, City Attorney, is that, yeah, that to me-
Thank you. Thank you. Now, stay, you, no, you have to stay on the subject. We're giving you a little leeway here.
Brilliant scholars, when it comes to historical cultural monuments, we as laymen would like to know how you base all these projects, and where we as taxpayers are sending our money, if that's not too much of a problem, City Attorney.
Thank you. Thank you. We gave you a little flexibility on that one. Let's, now she's disrupting. Come on, Ms. Ramirez, just take your seat, wait for the next item. Let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Walsh is out of time. Sean Murphy. Mr. Murphy passes. Let us prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, let's move on and clean up item number one, Madam Clerk, can we? So on item number one, I have two cards remaining. Oh, I, no, the public comment was closed on this item. So everything has been resolved, so we can just vote on it. Okay, thank you. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
So we're looking for the substitute motion on 22, so if we could speed that up a tad. We'll go into general public comment for a short while. Okay, if I could, Daniel, are you still here? Daniel Gus. Daniel, you go right ahead, followed by Sean Murphy.
That's my general public comment, by stating that I like Mr. Wesson, and I think he received an unfair grade from the LA Times of a C+. He's a lot better than that. But the LA Times nailed city council on the way you treat general public comment, not just Mr. Wesson, but Mitch Englander. Ms. Martinez, to a lesser degree, she's a little more tolerant. The LA Times said that city council treats this podium in an autocratic, punitive, contemptuous, and troubling way. You need to make the nexus between our discontent, and the tone, and the vocabulary, and the attitude that we bring here. The LA Times is calling out city council, not just Mr. Wesson. You need to treat this as a free speech zone regardless of our style, our content, and our vocabulary. Mr. Wesson's better than that. Give us, give us our two minutes. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Murphy.
I sure miss Tom Labonge. Everybody misses Tom Labonge. Anybody for the 5th District, don't vote Mitch Englander.
Donna Pierman. Mr. Previn, are you back? I'm going to save Eric, Mr. Previn's card. Joe Dolan, I believe it is.
Okay, can I start?
Please come forward. Antonio Ramirez. Yes.
Okay. Now that Miriam is a budget rep for VNC, and I'm her assistant, really need to have Van Nuys City Hall open for video conferencing to speak on behalf of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council concerning this behalf of the Neighborhood Council. Repeal it now. Anyway, Obama's wrong for having Navy Commander arrested for defending the Marines in Chattanooga, trying to stop the murders of another crime for my, not my President Obama. That's why the California law already in law before the city council needs to be repealed to allow law-abiding citizens and our military non-battle to be able to defend themselves with high-capacity weapons. And why having the guns locked in containers or disabled won't work, you have it, so you know, what's the point even having it if you have to have it locked? All the point if the crime happens, you're just tough out of luck. Anyway, Obama's a politician, won't help us. And if you, if you don't repeal the law-
Thank you, Donna. Thank you very much. Mr. Dolan, followed by Antonio Ramirez. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Donlan. I'm the Associate Director with Strategic Actions for a Just Economy. We're here today with fellow members of the UNIDAT Coalition in support of a project that was on your consent calendar today, located on the Blue Line called the Grand Metropolitan. And it includes significant community benefits that are a result of an intense community engagement process. Along with our partners from St. Francis Center, Esperanza Community Housing, Trust South LA, and CD Tech, we're joined by a public counsel who provided legal support on the process. And we're speaking in general public comments today to not just support that project, but to support the kind of equitable development that we'd like to see all over the city. Downtown is expanding into historic South Central LA for the first time, and with this new development, usually what we see is gentrification and displacement of local residents. But we know we can do better than this, and we've seen this in the example of the project that went forward. And we can address the homelessness and the housing affordability crises with, by creating good land use policy, tenant rights-
Thank you.
And fully funding-
Thank you, sir. So if I could get Ms. Ramirez, and I think this is a Kayah Sin, followed by a John London, and a Laura Raymond.
We have a horrific chango Latino gang and wetback epidemic. Remember, everything that they have, they have it because they stole it from the American people. The Latinos are filthy, nosy pigs and thieves. I would like to donate to the City of Los Angeles my Ralph's Market vandalized shopping cart that I bought early July 27th. The wheels and the entire shopping cart was deliberately damaged by both blacks and Latino chango gangbangers who hang out at the Grand Park area night and day, which is where I'm at. As I went to Ralph's Market with great trepidation and the cart breaking down, I was able to get to Ralph's parking, Ralph's store on Sunset, and the two chango gangbangers approached me, laughing at me, and it was license plate numbers four, E as in egg, U as in umbrella, A as in apple, 043, again, four, E-U-A, 043. And they said, I quote, "This is, this is, this is just the first half, wait till the second half. God bless Donald Trump."
Thank you. Okay, please come forward and identify yourself. Somebody help, Ms. Ramirez.
Hi.
State your name.
My name is Rabia Sun, and I'm with Esperanza Community Housing. We focus on issues of housing, health, economic, and environmental justice in South Central Los Angeles. And we're here today as part of the UNIDAT Coalition, where we aim to stop displacement of low-income people and people of color, and encourage development that helps to stabilize our communities. We believe and we know that we can have development without displacement, we can have better neighborhoods with the same neighbors. And we also know that we need to change our land use policies at the community plans level and citywide to fully achieve these goals. We hope that this also includes onsite affordable housing in the form of extremely low-income housing, which is typically the most affordable form of housing developers can create. We urge you to ensure that we have equitable land use policies that result in a net gain of affordable housing for all city residents. Thank you.
If I could have, is it Mr. London next? Please come forward, sir, and identify yourself.
Good morning, I'm John London. I'm a resident of South, South LA. Used to be South Central LA. I like the South LA, you know. Like, I've been, I'm a member, board member of Trust South LA, and we're part of the UNIDAT Coalition. And I noticed there's been a lot of development going on in my community, mostly for students and high-rate, high-income housing going on. on in my community, mostly for students and high-rate, high-income housing going on. So I'm here to urge you to support development that benefits low-income and long-term residents of South LA. And support a strong, equitable development policy in South LA. Also, the community benefits agreed on, like in the Grand Met Plan like that, should be not just a one-time thing, but that should go with all developers coming in Los Angeles, making money in our communities. So the UNIDAT Coalition submitted to the City Council in the planning department.
Mr. London, thank you. Your time's expired. Sargent, somehow Mr. Herman found his way back in. He should not be here. Please identify yourself.
Good morning. My name's Laura Raymond. I'm with the Alliance for Community Transit Los Angeles. Act LA is a coalition of 24 organizations from throughout the city, working on housing, environmental, and economic justice, and other issues of critical importance to the health of our communities. We've come together as a coalition because we believe this city has to be developed for all Angelinos, and so we're working for equitable development to be, sorry, equitable development to be developed along all transit corridors. The Grand Met Project, adjacent to the Blue Line, is a model for what community-serving transit-oriented development can be, as it includes deeply affordable housing, local hiring, services for the homeless, and support for small businesses. Angelinos want healthy, equitable development near transit, and the Act LA Coalition looks forward to supporting more efforts like this throughout the city that work towards this vision. Thank you.
Hold her time. You're disrupting. I just wanted, on the record, that again, he is disrupting the, this meeting, and was not suppo, and that, thank you, Mr. Kukorian. It was Mr. Herman, again, disrupting the meeting. He had re-entered the chambers after he had been removed. Please, wrap it up with a zinger, just like you did. No, we thank you. I'm looking for Candy Graham. Please come forward.
Hi. Thank you, guys, for having me. If we forget history, we doomed to repeat it. I've been in Enviro Video with the Fair Housing Community, and we've been working with the VA. I'm a community activist, a civil rights activist. I'm working with the building, located, historical property located in Hollywood, and it has full compliance with the Department of Building and Safety, the Housing Department, LAHD. Hassela, just today, got illegal orders to enter the building and break the tenants' doors. Now, the question is this: What happens to their constitutional rights? I'm totally broken up because, I mean, I'm coming up, I don't know what to do. I mean, it happens all the time. I mean, all I can do is fight and rely on you guys, but are you really listening? I mean, when I told you before, I mean, people's rights are being violated.
Would you like some, can we give her, would you like some water or something, ma'am? Thank you. I'd now like to bring up Suzanne Verge. And we have, I don't want to have a disruption from in the back, so please control yourself, but I do have a Suzanne Verge. I'm still looking for Mr. Previn. And Henry Marine, you're up next. Welcome.
Thank you. I was just, wanted to discuss item number seven, the high-capacity magazines, the exemption for peace officers.
Well, you know, we really, we're not there yet. So why don't you just give us a general, your general view. Go right ahead.
Yes, we just did not want the exemption for peace officers, and I think with item number eight, there was confusion.
No, speak generally. Hold her time.
I'm gonna be specific, because I don't want to waste your time. I will, you know what I'm gonna do? I will go back to item number seven. Instead of marking it "general comments," I'll make it...
That might not be a bad idea. Thank you. Mr. Marine. And I'm still looking for Eric Previn. Sergeant, maybe you might want to stick your head out if you see Mr. Previn. Mr. Marine.
Yes, as you know, MOU, ongoing MOU, show other members of the Hackboard and City Council, agreed to buy stock in union buildings in lieu of making contributions to laces and calpers. And we know that hindsight is 2020. And if you don't come for time as required under California Government Code 20202305, then you gotta make back payments in compliance with 23016. I mean, 2283. You already know the numbers. But, so with that said, Mr. Wesson's gonna help us recover CRA funding in California when he makes those back payments to laces and calpers and show that he is an honorable man instead of a niggardly man. So, please, 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 you know, and please, negatively eliminate government group agreements and negatively eliminate government group employment relationships, you know what I mean?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Wezar.
Point of personal privilege, I know there was an item today on the agenda, item number five, which went through plan. We cannot speak to items that are on the agenda, but there were some public comments from UNIDAT and other folks. I just wanted to mention generally that I wanted to thank you for making this a better project. Goes to show that in this city, when getting more affordable housing is one of our biggest concerns, you made this project a better one by working with a developer, and you have a number, a percentage, that is not going to affordable housing. I think this was a great way to go about it. I just urge you to stay involved, continue doing what you're doing. You make this project better, you're making South LA project and the Central City project better for the, area better for this, and I want to encourage you to keep doing what you're doing. And it's an example of what could happen throughout the city when people say there's no room for affordable housing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar. We're going to continue item 18, Madam Clerk, until tomorrow.
That's August 5?
Yes. So with that said, why don't we, Mr. Kukorian? Want to take up items seven and eight, Mr. Englander?
Separately, separately.
Seven and eight, we'll do it separately. Who wants to start off? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, very much. Members, sometimes when we talk about issues like gun violence, we can get lost in statistics, and numbers don't tell the whole story. So I just want to share a little bit of the news of the day in our country. Last Wednesday night, in Washington, DC, a three-year-old girl was shot and killed by her seven-year-old brother by accident. On Thursday, the next day, 14-year-old Charlie Martin was playing with a friend, and he was accidentally shot in the head in Sunrise, Florida, by that 16-year-old friend, when they were playing with a gun that belonged to a friend of theirs' stepfather, who kept it in a cardboard box. Now Charlie's dead. On Friday, the next day, in Houston, Texas, two young boys were playing with a gun in a house that they were visiting when it went off and fatally struck one of them in the head. He was eight years old. And it was the sixth child dead from a handgun accident in the last five months in the Houston area alone. Now, there are about 15,000 children and teens who are shot and killed or seriously injured in this country each and every year. 15,000, more than 1,000 a month. And the vast majority of those situations are, occur because a gun was not safely maintained in the home of a friend, or a relative, or their own home. That's what this ordinance that we're considering today is about. It's about keeping guns safely stored in people's homes so that these sorts of incidents are far less likely to occur. And we know that even the NRA itself, any responsible gun organization, advocacy organization, will say that even if you choose to keep a handgun in your home for self-defense, you must safely store that handgun. It's the only responsible thing for a gun owner to do. So when we hear about imposition on the rights of, you know, law-abiding gun owners, no. What this ordinance does is it acts, it asks gun owners to act responsibly, like the law-abiding people that they, that they feel that they are. So this is not a significant imposition on anyone. It merely asks that we do what the NRA itself recommends that they do. So there's three ways that a gun owner can be in compliance with this ordinance as it's being proposed. One, maintain it with a trigger lock or keep it in a locked container, number one. Number two, keep it on your person. Number three, keep it in close enough proximity that that handgun can be immediately accessed for self-defense purposes or otherwise. So that third point allows the gun owner to preclude access by a child or another unauthorized person. That's the point of that language. And I want to point out that that language did not come out of thin air, because I know there were some members who had concerns about that language. So let me just speak to that for a moment. That language came verbatim from the California state law on child access prevention. It was lifted exactly from the state law. And when that language was before the state legislature, it was supported by the California chapters of the Brady Campaign to Prevent Gun Violence, by the Coalition Against Gun Violence, by the Law Center to Prevent Gun Violence, by the South County Citizens Against Gun Violence, and by the California Police Chiefs Association. So even unchanged, that language was supported by all of those. But I know that some have questioned, what exactly does that mean, close proximity? So I would like to propose that on that third point, in order to assuage any concerns that anyone has about ambiguity on that, I would like to propose that that third point be amended so that it would read "within close enough proximity and control" that the owner can readily retrieve and use the handgun as if carried on the person. So we have proximity and control, easy access for self-defense purposes, all in the same sentence. Now, that language, as I say, has broad support from organizations that advocate on this issue, from law enforcement, and accident prevention professionals. So I would say, I would recommend your I-vote on this ordinance with that amendment. And, actually, I'll come back to my other points, Mr. President, when we close, if I may, but I would recommend approval of the committee report with that one word, or two words added to point number three, and I'd ask for your I-vote.
Thank you. Mr. Englander.
That was a friendly amendment that I'd like to second as well. First and foremost, Mr. Kukorian, I really appreciate the passion and dedication you've had to this for a long time. It's not something recent. The stories that you just shared with us of innocent children getting a hold of guns, their parents' guns, and accidentally shooting each other and killing each other are no accidents. There's no such thing as an accident when it comes to that. This council, in fact, just last year, said that we are no longer calling hit-and-runs here in Los Angeles accidents, because when you hit somebody on the side of the road with your vehicle and you flee, you've committed a crime and you are a coward. When you leave your gun out, when you do not secure it, and a child gets a hold of it, it is not an accident. Now, can we sit here and legislate against negligence, stupidity, and criminal behavior? No. And anything we can do and should do will never be enough to legislate against stupidity and negligence and criminal behavior. But too many people are getting access to guns unintended. We've got to do something while still protecting both law enforcement and upstanding citizens as well, and I think this does that, while protecting those who have rights to bear arms in their own homes and making sure that these accidents, and there's no such thing, don't occur. If we prevent one, if we send the message to one parent, to one family member, to lock your gun when you're not around, when you don't have access and control, if we prevent one from happening, we've saved a life. You can't put a price on that. That's why we're here. I support that friendly amendment, and I support LAPD has stepped up to support this as well, not only to support it amongst all the citizens here in Los Angeles, but to support it on their own officers. It follows LAPD policy, procedures, best practices, and the NRA guidelines. I too support it, and I ask for your I-vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Members, this item has been discussed, and we have fulfilled our public comment requirement. But what I'd like to do is at least, I'm gonna call up the first five, I'm gonna reopen it for five, the first five speakers on item seven. So Geraldine Stapleton, Geraldine Stapleton, please come down. Suzanne Verge, Vergie, come down. Rosemary Jenkins, please come down. Lorraine Moreland, and the last speaker, Reverend Oliver Blue. Ms., the floor is yours.
Hi, thank you, and good morning, all. My name is Geraldine Stapleton. I am the president of the California National Organization for Women, which is the largest organization for women's rights. I also serve on the LA Domestic Violence Task Force as alternate for CD4. We are here to support this motion. However, we do have some hesitation on item number three that has been added. My personal story with this, when I was growing up, my younger brother, John, had two other friends who happened to be boys that were inseparable. Donald had an older sister who had a boyfriend, who had a gun in his belongings. As boys will do, they got into it, they found it, and they're playing around. Unfortunately, Donald shot the other boy, who happened to be the only son of a woman who was a widow. I can't impress upon you the importance of a locked box.
No, I appreciate you. That happened to a friend of mine when I was in the fifth grade, so I know exactly. You're back.
Yes, there was just an error with...
It's okay.
...the cards. But Suzanne Verge, behalf of the Los Angeles Chapter of the Brady Campaign to Prevent Gun Violence, I love seeing democracy at work. Thank you for working with the language. Thank you for the compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Jenkins, I think I remember you from last week. Now, and you are?
Rosemary Jenkins.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, I am here to support the overall ordinance, but I'm very concerned about item three. I spoke before the Safety Committee earlier this morning, and I agree 100% with Mr. Bonin and Ms. Martinez, that I, it's beyond me to understand how a gun that's sitting on a table or a lap near a bed or near a chair, and somebody's asleep or gets distracted, and a child comes to play with it. It's counterintuitive to me, unless the wording, I know Mr. Kukorian talked about control, but what kind of control is there that would prevent that kind of access to children? And also, very quickly, I'm concerned about the access to retired officers, because we've seen former officers, like Mr. Dorner, kill people.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Moreland? And it's you I remember.
Good afternoon. Thank you, sir, for allowing me to be here, and I thank everyone for speaking. I'm here for Women Against Gun Violence. I have lost two sons on the streets of Los... I have lost two sons on the streets of Los Angeles. One, a very good basketball player, and a loving and kind husband that was taken away from our world. Now, this is not a soap opera. Life is in session, and we need help with these guns. We need people to understand what's going on. We have to open our hearts and our minds and understand that this is an important matter, guns, 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 and people in the wrong people's hands. We need them locked, and we need to let them know that we care what's going on in our world. This is no joke. This is no TV show. This is no firearm like you watch TV. People's lives are dying. It could be yours, 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 your child. You get a phone call in the middle of the night and say that your little baby boy that's grown up to be a man is gone, your child is gone. This is no joke. We need to put a stop to this. No one should be able to be able to carry a gun, I mean, hold on to a gun in their house, retired police or anything, because they get stolen from them, and then the user's going to use them on us.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now I need to go to, for your "thank you," that was moving. Reverend Blue?
Good afternoon. Reverend Oliver E. Bowie from Holman United Methodist Church, and I'm here to stand and say that, number one, we definitely need to take great consideration and pay close attention to the negligence of those who have guns, and we need to hold them accountable if negligence takes place. Innocent lives are taken because of negligence. It's a huge responsibility to own a firearm, and it should be a huge responsibility when negligence takes place. Also, I'd like to stand here and say that we would like no exemptions for retired police officers for high-powered weapons. Here in Los Angeles, for at least the last past 30 years, we have experienced unnecessary violence and thousands of people murdered senselessly. And I believe that we need to look at this matter as a whole and rethink the whole matter.
Thank, no, thank you all. I'd like to now call on Mr. Bloomingfield.
Thank you. I rise in strong support of this, this legislation. You know, for me, I mean, for all of us, we know how personal this, this issue is. And when my kids go out on playdates, we sometimes call up the parents and ask, is there a gun in the house? Is it properly locked up? It's a very awkward conversation to have with another parent. Something like this creates a level of safety for folks so that you know you're in Los Angeles, that that's the law, and that's what those other parents need to be doing if they have a firearm as well. So it's, it's extremely important, and I want to thank Mr. Kukorian for, for making the, the change to add in the Sunnyvale language as well, because we pick up that extra protection of control. It's just, it's like a belt and suspenders. I understand that the other language was in, in Brady, but this, this gives you the belt and the suspenders. So I strongly support this, this bill, and I urge you all to vote "aye."
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have a very lengthy discussion in terms of what control and the word "control" meant. On a person or within proximity doesn't necessarily mean in control. So I am satisfied with the new language, and thank you both for compromising, and I feel, I feel more comfortable moving this forward. I don't know about Mr. Bonin, I know you and I shared the same concerns in committee this morning, but I do feel like this is moving us one step forward, so I urge your support on this one. Thank you.
Mr. Kukorian, if we could ask you to close.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, we spoke about accidental shootings of children, but that's not the only issue that we addressed with this. Safe storage is an important matter, as Ms., as Ms. Moreland reminded us, in other circumstances as well. When a gun is not properly stored in the home and a theft occurs, that gun is much more likely to be used as a crime gun out on the streets, and then we're all affected by that. When a gun is not properly stored in a home, a brief moment of teenage depression or frustration or anger, instead of passing, as those moments do for most teens, could become an irrevocable act, an act of suicide or, or violence that cannot be taken back. So that's why it's so important that we act on this today. And I want to let everyone know, because another, a number of the speakers, the public commented on this, I want the members of the public to know that the language that we're voting on today has no exceptions. No exceptions for law enforcement officers, no exceptions for anyone. Everyone must act in the same way to store their firearms responsibly. And even with that language, I'm very proud to say that the men and women of the Los Angeles Police Department, the department itself, and their rank-and-file officers are supportive of this, because they, more than anybody, know the consequences that happen when these firearms are not properly stored. They take this responsibility of the use of firearms more seriously than anybody, because they need it as a tool in their trade, but they also see every single day the horrors that occur far too often in this city because firearms are not properly stored. They're not properly respected. They're misused. And so I'm very proud that the department, the Police Protective League, both have come in in support of this ordinance as well. And, members, with that, I would like to say, this is, this will be, if you act today in support of this measure, Los Angeles will have enacted the strongest, most well-thought-out, most defensible, most important, most significant step forward on safe storage of firearms in the state of California, in the state of California's history. That's what's before us today, and I respectfully ask for your "aye" vote, and I ask that if this is approved, that the ordinance come back to council for further consideration one week from today. I ask for your "aye" vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Madam Clerk, did you want to say a few things prior to the vote?
Yes, Mr. President. Just for clarification, council is voting, is not voting on ordinance today. Today, council was voting on the request for the city attorney to prepare the ordinance as amended, as stated on the Public Safety Committee report as amended.
Thank you. With that said, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Englander, did-- Okay, now we're going to move to item eight. I will go to Mr. Englander to begin this conversation.
Great. Thank you very much. And, you know, we, we actually passed this large-capacity magazine unanimously last week. And with that, in looking and doing a deep dive with LAPD and our experts, and what's happening both in the state of California, what many of you, in fact, have voted on in the state of California to allow retired to carry, and including reserves, which was a 15-year discussion, quite frankly, when you were in Sacramento, has, was passed by the legislature. In fact, Congress enacted similar legislation, saying that we need a force multiplier. We need to look at those who are out there and trained, that have spent two or three decades of their career, of their life, representing us, to continue to not only carry, but to carry with their, with their, with their weapon that they were trained with and qualified for. And in fact, they'd have to continue, and they must continue to qualify for every year, and that expires. We had a couple items this morning that were, that were passed, and I'd like to, I've got one amendment after some discussion, and looking at one of the issues that was brought to our attention was under one of the changes, which was, or licensed security officers with guard cards. And it was brought to our attention that there is an institution, in fact, that trains with LAPD, that goes through our academy, that aren't 830-certified post-law enforcement, but are licensed security officers with guard cards that have high-capacity magazines. We're looking for an exemption. They've indicated to us, I believe through Councilmember Kukorian, that they don't necessarily require that exemption. So with that information, we can go ahead, and I would move that we strike that language that came out of committee that's before us this morning. The other thing is, I would like to share with you, is we're not asking today for the change on the ordinance, as some people have thought. And we've passed some significant legislation here in Los Angeles and other things in Sacramento that often times, after we pass, we do a deeper dive on, we find out unintended consequences, and we update and change. A lot of those discussions, as we well know, are taking place today with Prop 47, for example. And with that, we're simply asking for the city attorney, and this is really important, we're simply asking the city attorney to draft these changes, these two updates, and send them back to committee with those recommendations for further discussion. That's the simple action. I'd like to ask LAPD up to the table, and if we could, in their expert analysis and opinion, to discuss the, what I would call two minor modifications, and from the department's perspective. Thank you. And, and I know Councilman Wesson, if didn't do so already, would like to recognize, because I see him in the back there, Nate Holden is here in council chamber, so give a big shout out to him as well. So, thank you.
Let's give Nick, my, my former boss, a round of applause. I will throw, I'll throw something at you later, Mr. Englander. I was going to do that. Anyway, glad to have the department before us. Floor is yours.
President, Wesson, thank you. Kirk Albany, Chief of Detectives for the LAPD. I think, Councilmember Englander, can I ask you be specific in terms of what you would like--
Yeah, so we have basically the modification of, of why would it be important to have retired officers continue to carry either high capacity and/or, why do we give them CCWs in the first place, and what's the department's position on that?
Okay, and, and thank you for that clarification. The department's perspective, members of the city council, is that the individuals that leave the LAPD generally between 25 and 30 years of service, in some cases more, highly-trained individuals, if they leave in good standing, they're issued a concealed weapon permit to carry the weapon. We believe also related is HR 218 that Congress passed that allows any retired police officer in America to carry their weapon anywhere in the country, as long as they qualify yearly with that weapon. We have set up a, a system at the Los Angeles Police Department in August this month where retired officers can come up to the academy and qualify with their weapons. So I'm in concurrence with Councilmember Englander in terms of the force multiplier that reserve off, that, excuse me, that retired officers generate for the community, in terms of, in the event that we have an incident, they may become that first responder, and we want them to be there and, and capable of, of bringing that incident to a close without loss of life. And so our officers at LAPD, they retire, they get a CCW, they have to renew it every five years, they have to qualify, they have to remain in good standing. And with that, we support, LAPD supports retired officers and their ability to carry the same magazines, by the way, that they carried for 30 years in the LAPD.
Thank you. And with that, I would ask for your "aye" vote on that. Again, we're simply asking for the updated language from the city attorney to go back to committee. I understand there's an unsolicited city attorney opinion letter as well that was circulated. That could be discussed, should we decide in, in committee, to bring that into a closed session discussion as well. The other part of that which was brought to our attention, it's simply striking out the language that we, that we have as, and, and does so while acting within the scope of his or her duties. We have United States military, we have law enforcement, we have LAPD officers that need to bring what they're carrying every day to and from work as well, to and from the range for qualification. And so it's not a further exemption at all. In fact, when we, and I want to, this is important for clarification, we talked about a further exemption of licensed security officers. I'm striking that from the committee report. It's further clarification, not an exemption. So those are the two changes on number one, and then the new change on 14 with the exemption of retired officers, and I would ask for your "aye" vote. Thank you.
Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I read the, the document that was mentioned from the city attorney, and certainly the city attorney wouldn't be the only one concerned about the legal elements of this. I was wondering if a representative from the city attorney's office could come up and, and discuss this with us.
That's a privileged memo, so.
Mr., Paul, I didn't hear your request, if you could--
I, I asked that the city attorney come up and further discuss his, his memo on the legal challenges to this.
If, if I may--
Yes.
--Mr. Corretts and Mr. President, that, that was a confidential memo that was transmitted. Our attorneys will probably attempt to speak vaguely and generally so that we're not betraying any confidences.
But let me, let me ask this. Now, we're not, I thought I heard, Mr. Englander, I thought I heard you say that we were, that this, these concerns were going to go back--
Back to committee, that's correct. Yeah, I would object with this--
Which might be the more appropriate time to have that conversation, Mr. Corretts, since this was confidential.
Yep. I, I think the appropriate time would be at council before we direct it. I can't vote in favor of this without at least having that conversation, because there certainly are significant legal questions, and I think it's our responsibility to have some information on that before we take this vote. Otherwise, I can't vote for it.
And if I could, I'd like to reiterate, it's simply going to committee for those discussions.
This is Dave Michelson with the Office of the City Attorney. If council is not seeking to request our office to draft this additional language and transmit it, and if council is only seeking to have it further discussed at committee, potentially aspects to be discussed in closed session if properly agendized, then that, I think, is certainly fine. We'll have an opportunity to be your lawyers and provide you advice. That's what we do. If council is prepared to direct our office today, request our office today, to make these changes and to transmit, we do have advice that we'd like to provide you. We've already provided some of that advice in a confidential report. We cannot go into closed session today. It's not agendized for a closed session. So that's sort of all I'll offer at this point.
Mr. Kukorian.
Maybe I can help with this a little bit. If, if the instruction is to the city attorney to come back with language, you can agendize a closed session to discuss that draft language when you come back to committee, can you not?
We would be, we would be pleased to do that, certainly.
Okay, then we don't need to do that today. We can act to do that instruction. You can have a closed session discussion in committee. You can have another closed session discussion in council if you want, right? I, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear on the process here. So this is simply a request to have draft language come back, as I understand it. Mr. Englander can speak to that, but that's, that's what I had--
That is actually correct, and if I could ask, what you've done is totally, completely embarrassing and out of line, and you're represent--
No, 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 Mitchell--
I'm not asking for reaction.
Mr. Englander. Mr. Englander, I, let's, Mr. Corretts, let me go back to you.
Well, I, I would just make the point that I actually found that memo somewhat convincing, so unless we actually discuss the, the merits of the item, I certainly would have to vote against it, and I would assume that anyone that had those similar doubts about the legality would also vote against it, until we've had that conversation.
Well, I think that people should vote the way, whatever, wherever their comfort level is, that that's exactly how they should vote. But it does make sense to me that we can move forward, agendize this, and still have the conversation.
And, Mr. President, to reiterate, there should be no discussion among council members or staff regarding the contents of that memo.
Okay, so let me ask, call on Mr. Buscayino at this point. I think we've got it together, how to perceive. But go ahead, Mr. Buscayino.
I, I, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to stand as-- I, I just want to stand as, um, this, a council member who, who's second in this motion to speak on the merits of the, what's before you, and something I mentioned in Public Safety Committee today on the importance of exempting retired police officers, because if we don't exempt retired police officers, what we're doing, we'll be cutting the hat, the, uh, we'll be tying the hands of those who we rely on the most as it relates, um, to being our first, our first responders. Um, I have worked the field numerous occasions, many, many, many years, and as I also mentioned in committee, that, um, there, what we've experienced across the country, um, cops are being targeted, both cops who are on duty and those who have served municipalities across this country. So it's important that we move, I mean, I, I mean, I, I agree, I was kind of stunned to, uh, know, uh, this, this unsolicited memo that we got from the city attorney. Um, but I'm willing, I mean, I think what, what I'm hearing is that we're going to hash this out in committee, in closed session, and bring this back to this full council, and that, from what I understand, is the process that we'll move forward to, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Englander, we may want to just move, uh, forward with the vote is, or did you want to close?
I, I just wanted to, uh, get, reiterate the vote, if I could, for clarification, to make sure there's no confusion.
Please, go ahead.
So we're, we need to strike the word "read" and put the word "include," so as amended to include, um, any government officer, agent, or employee. We are striking "or licensed security officers with guard cards." We're striking that language. So I just wanted to add that clarification, and this is an instruction for the city attorney to draft the language, to come back to committee, as we often do.
And this is where we'll have our conversation.
And we'll have the conversation to follow that process, and out of respect, would ask for your aye vote in following that process. Thank you.
Okay, so with that said, Madam Clerk, if you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, four noes.
Okay, thank you.
That passes.
What is, uh, before this council?
Mr. President, uh, substitute motion for item twenty-two has been circulated.
Okay, so we're ready with that?
Yes, first council should vote on whether to substitute.
Okay, so this first vote is on substitution. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now we will vote on the item itself. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That brings us where, or what's before this body?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, and the, the items are posted and referred?
That clears it up.
Yeah, because we completed public comment. So I don't, I, every card, every card that was put up, I could, I, uh, called on. So let us, uh, Mr. Walsh, you didn't get up? Okay, come forward. I'm sorry about that.
That's fine. In any other country in the world, I'd be shot dead for what I say in front of, the type of things I say in front. Uh, let's realize that Herb Wesson got a C-plus from the, uh, LA Times, and the number-one thing they hit you on, they roasted you on, was your treatment of the public under public comment. Read the C-plus they gave you, I think it was, uh, very high. Incidentally, I don't know why the LA Times think, I'm, I'm going to be on your side now. I don't think, uh, why they think they have the right to hand out report cards. In California, you have to pass the C-best test in order to be a teacher and hand out public, uh, cards. But in any case, Robert Green has roasted the LA, uh, has roasted, uh, our, uh, council president for his attitude on public comment. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes, uh, that concludes general public comment. What's before this body? We need to reconsider item one aye? So let's vote on reconsideration, item one aye. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And it's my understanding the request is that that be continued for two weeks?
That's August eighteenth.
Okay, thank you. Now, uh, what's before this body? Posting and referred?
Yes, Mr. President, I think we're at announcements and adjourned motions.
Okay, on the past, uh, what item was that? Eight? It's my understanding Mr. Harris Dawson would like to be recorded as a, uh, no vote on that item. Okay, so now, that, uh, announcements, members, announcements? Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, today is National Night Out across all of our districts. I know that probably everyone in the city council will be visiting his or her, uh, local, uh, police division and/or, uh, organized community group to help support public safety across our neighborhoods, so I wish everyone a wonderful national night out here in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. All rise. If everyone could please rise. This is when we adjourn. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to take the opportunity to adjourn in the memory of Evelyn Peirman. Mrs. Peirman passed away after an unexpected illness on Sunday, June twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen. She was eighty-three years old at the time of her untimely death. Evelyn was born on September twenty-fourth, nineteen thirty-one, in Jersey City, New Jersey. She was a graduate of Peabody College in Nashville, Tennessee, and majored in English, working in her early years as an English teacher. In her retirement years, Evelyn enjoyed writing and became a published poet, crafting hundreds of poems. She met her husband, Henry Edgar Peirman, in college, and their love lasted over five decades, with a marriage that continued on for almost fifty years. Evelyn was a very active member of the community of Lake Babo, which she, where she raised her children for over forty years, instilling in them the notion of community activism that now lives on through her children. Her faith helped her endure the eleven-year gap between her beloved death of her own husband, and now the, the two are once again reunited. Evelyn leaves behind a legacy of wisdom, assertiveness, acceptance, and love. She was assertive and spoke her mind, but never with ill will. She taught her family how to enjoy life, how to parent, and how to handle adversity, and how to love unconditionally. She will be dearly missed. She is survived by her son Steve Peirman, daughters Donna Peirman, Jenny Grimsley, grandchildren Bethany, Marissa, Caitlin, Baron, Jillian, and great-granddaughter Lily. May she rest in peace.
Donna, we are sorry. We are all sorry for your loss. Uh, I'm still looking to my right, any additional adjournings? I'm now, Mr. Buscaino, to my left.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two colleagues. One for Joseph Good, who died on July fifteenth. He was born in nineteen thirty-one in Chester, Pennsylvania, and moved to San Pedro five years later, which he would live the rest of his life in San Pedro. He graduated from San Pedro High School and opened a service station with his brother at the corner of Gaffey Street and Ninth, which eventually became, uh, the Joe and Mike Good Automotive Repair. Uh, with his brother, he also owned and operated the Peninsula Car Care Center in Rolling Hills Estates, which was the first car care center in the western U.S. Also Good Buick GMC Trucks in Wilmington, and the Peninsula Pontiac GMC Buick in Torrance. Joe was a member of the San Pedro Elks Club and was the recipient of the Ante Perkoff Humanitarian of the Year Award from the San Pedro Lions Club. He is survived by his loving wife, Dottie, his five daughters, ten grandchildren, his brother Mike, nephews and, and great, and grandnephew. In lieu of flowers, family asks the donations be made to Little Sisters of the Poor in San Pedro, um, the San Pedro Peninsula Cancer Guild, or the San Pedro Elks Building Fund. Also, colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Brian Asher. He was born on April eighth, nineteen fifty-four, and attended San Pedro schools in Cal State Northridge, and performed the cello and bass, uh, at churches, clubs, and also South Bay events. He is survived by his mother Dorothy, sister Megan, Aunt Marilyn, cousins and friends. Services will be held tomorrow, 1:00 p.m. at St. Peter's Church on Ninth Street in San Pedro. In lieu of flowers, please consider donation to the Brian W. Asher Memorial Music Ministry at St. Peter's Church. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more adjournings? Not seeing any, uh, this meeting is adjourned.